Welcome back. So, we are on page 19, continuing along with questions to the responses to information requests, and we are at the ones by Councilmember Lentz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, on page 19, I had asked for information in regards to San Francisco's new guidelines for traffic mitigation and parking for new development. At the bottom of the page, they're looking at parking space requirements at about half a parking spot to one space per unit, and then it talks about unbundled parking. Can you talk about the unbundled parking?
I'll start with what bundled parking is, which is what we typically do. That would say this use must have this many parking spaces, and a requirement that parking comes with, if you're in an apartment project, parking comes with the project, and you have a right as an apartment dweller to park on that site. Unbundling would say that you would purchase your property, rent your unit separate from your right to park a car there, that you would have to actually buy that separately or rent that separately.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's it on that.
Okay. Anything else on 19 from anyone else? Page 20.
So, then on item number two, so the Planning Commission has a recommendation regarding infrastructure development prior to site development. And so, the first bullet point talks about each increment of development would be required to be provided with appropriate infrastructure, services, and facilities, and site amenities. So, how would we go about ensuring that the proper infrastructure is done in accordance with development, so that we don't, say, have one type of development that's done, and then we're lacking in some of the traffic infrastructure that's needed?
Right, and it's done through use of performance standards, some of the most obvious ones, and there are specific plans that use those performance standards in various different ways as a phasing tool. So, you would, some of the really basic standards are meeting fire flow at all locations, sewer standards, having adequate street drainage standards, and then it would be, rather than say phase one is in this location, and phase two is then here, you would have a situation where a merchant builder would come to the developer based on market forces, and then the developer and the merchant builder would then look at, can we get infrastructure up front to this piece that meets all the city's standards? And you would let the market dictate which parts of the site build out in what order. Your protection would be then making sure that the roadways are always adequate in terms of level of service standards, that your sewer is always adequate in terms of its performance standards, and what ultimate facilities would need to be put in to drain any particular portion of the site, same in terms of water, and then looping water systems providing fire flow, and you would create standards in relation to essentially milestones for the dedication of open space provision in case you would have large amount of residential, library, park provision, open space dedications, habitat restoration, and you would tie all of that to either a performance standard against wherever the development happens to be, or certain amount of development at some point, this must be done. And it's that kind rather than a typical phasing plan that says, we'll build it out in this order, because the one thing I've seen with large-scale specific plans, not a single one of them I've ever seen was built out in the order that is, as it was originally approved. And because market changes occur, and unfortunately, fortunately or unfortunately, the merchant builders who are out there to build don't follow what was originally approved. They're following the market on what can be built, and what is, as they look at it, what is the best location within this site or another site for what I want to build? And by setting up these performance standards, the Planning Commission determined that they could protect the city in terms of all necessary facilities in place without trying to outguess who wants to build where and what, in what order.
Yeah, that makes sense. And then those performance standards, I'm assuming they're going to be based on density? What level of performance is determined by the type of density that is allowed in a particular area?
It's not so much density, it's amount of development being proposed.
Okay.
So, for example, in one project I worked on, they were looking at opening up, eventually they were going to need structured parking. There just wasn't enough ground space to put parking in the big open parking lots, and they were going to be in a structure, and they actually set a standard, structures must be in place when this total amount of development is in place. And you could do the same with major park improvements, dedication of open space, very typical in phasing, dedication of this park and shall be made prior to the certificate of occupancy for this amount of square footage or this residential unit. And it's a matter of then negotiating with an applicant on meeting those standards, meeting those milestones, because that also becomes critical to the developer in being able to generate enough value out of land sale to build things, but also gets out from under, just trying to outguess the individual projects that may come in in what order.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on page 20? 23?
All right, I do want page 23. So, during our Baylands Subcommittee meeting, one of the examples was this town that was built in, I guess it's a new town, Oban, Germany.
Germany.
All right, so, and in this town, they disallow cars entering. I mean, that's very extreme. But, you know, part of, you know, some of these questions that I was getting at was minimal parking or requiring no parking. And so, yeah, in order to achieve, you know, the ability to move freely throughout the site and to the site, if you're not going to allow people to park, then you're going to have to provide a very robust public transportation system. So, I just wanted to talk about the residential part, not the other uses where, you know, perhaps some parking would be built. But for residential, if the council was to allow some housing at the site, could the council require no personal parking spaces be developed but have shared parking for the residential units?
I think you could do that in a number of different ways, but, and one example where you don't have parking requirements the same way elsewhere is Avalon, because you don't bring cars out to Catalina Island.
Yeah.
The thing, though, that to keep in mind is, is having no parking at a residential site, having no parking at a commercial area does not preclude people from driving there. And so, it's a matter of finding a balance, and also a matter of not just having robust transit, but having enough transit to meet the entire, you know, to say no cars, you'd have to have enough transit to meet the entire transportation need, access on and off a site via transit, and now you need a much different kind of system than is now available to the Baylands. There's areas in New York where you could say, no, Manhattan.
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
Because you can get there any time, yeah. The deal is you can get to that any time of day to or from, so unbundling parking is different than having no parking at all.
Yeah, you know, and we'll get a little bit deeper into that, you know, later with the questions, but, you know, so, I mean, I understand, you know, people need to get around, and it has to be convenient. And so, if there was, in our transportation system, a shuttle system, a bicycle sharing system, close proximity to the station, close proximity to the amenities that they would want, I mean, you know, then, you know, not having a car is okay. I mean, I know a lot of people that live in San Francisco, they don't have cars, and then they'll rattle off, okay, well, I got all these other things that I just said. So, if that was a direction that the council wanted to do to reduce the vehicle miles traveled, to reduce the carbon footprint at the site, you could say no parking for residential, but then you'd also have to back it up with the proper transportation plan to accommodate that.
Correct. It would need to come as an entire package.
As a package, absolutely.
Right, and out of that, also recognizing that while you have land use authority, you have, you don't have the authority over the transit systems, and it requires two things to make that work with no automobiles or very few automobiles, and that is very robust transit that runs 24 hours a day, that also has, at least during peak times or throughout most of the day, very short headways, because people are, if they have to wait a half an hour, hour, and you need a lot of development intensity, a lot of development itself to support that level of transit.
Yeah, you know, and I, yeah, and I want to talk about that, you know, later as well, in regards to, I mean, there's, there is a lot of emphasis on the transit-oriented housing, but I think there needs to be an equal amount of attention on the transit-oriented commercial. You know, when you look in San Mateo County, most people do not live on a transit corridor. They live east and west of these transit corridors. We need to get them to that transit corridor and then get them to work. Not all the housing has to be done in the Baylands, but of course, we know that's not the case, because there's all this, the housing being developed in San Francisco. Okay, so then, you know, so in regards to moving the multimodal station to the Geneva Avenue extension, so in the plans, the Bus Rapid Transit plans, or that, not plan, but that, that study that was done by San Francisco, it calls out not having the multimodal station moved, at least not further south to Geneva Avenue extension, but having it be separate. So, which I'm trying to understand, why would you do that? I mean, and really, I'm just getting your opinion on that. I mean, does that make sense to have the Bus Rapid Transit be separate from the Caltrain station?
I'll take that a little bit differently. I'll answer it a little bit differently.
All right.
There is logic that would say that the Caltrain station and Caltrain service could be the hub of multimodal, several different modes at the same location. That would be not only Caltrain use, but BRT use. You have then the potential, depending on your land use decision, for high-intensity land use, mixed uses at that location, and creating that kind of hub. I think there's a lot of other considerations that go into that question of where does BRT go, where does the station go? You have design considerations, you've got considerations regarding timing of Geneva extension, the design of Geneva extension, perceptions as to what would be served, and so one of the things also is the perception of the route you would want for BRT should be served, have an equal amount of usage both north and south of the route, on either side of the route. So, there's a lot of different considerations that go into it, and different modes have different objectives, both short-term and long-term. There are unknowns in relation to design and how pieces will fit together. So, what would seem to be the logical package for everything may not work when you start looking at individual pieces of a system, and how you would phase improvements to individual pieces.
Okay, yeah, so, so the question was about, you know, moving the multimodal station to the Geneva Avenue extension. I know San Francisco's argument is that we're building the housing, the station should be near the housing, that's why we're pushing hard to keep the station where it is, or actually to move it into San Francisco. But it seems to me that we need to have greater communication with San Francisco, and an understanding that in order to have that multimodal station not only service them, but also the Baylands, that moving it to the north limits the ability to have a half-mile radius of a variety of uses around the site. You know, how do we, how do we work with our neighbor to the north to come up with a transportation plan that is not one-sided, San Francisco's side?
They're not going to listen to anything that we got, Cliff, they're not going to listen to anything we got to say, you know? The only way to bring San Francisco to the table is the way we got them to the table 15, 20 years ago, when they wanted to build a stadium out there, and a huge shopping mall connected to the stadium, and then they did the EIR, and they said, oh, Brisbane responded, how are you going to get all the people through a four-way stop sign? They go, well, we're just going to do it. And I said, well, we own the road. That's the only way we got to the table with San Francisco back then. San Francisco's going to do what San Francisco does. Right now, we're in a Bay County PDA, right? And, you know, they're going to plan the way they're going to plan. Everybody's going to do what they're going to do, you know? I mean, we look at each other, and I think we try to coordinate it the best we can, and sometimes, you know, it just goes sideways. You know, I mean, you got folks in San Francisco that want to annex Brisbane, you know? How do you deal with something like that? You know, I mean, it's just goofy, so, you know, I wouldn't even worry about it until we kind of get where we want to go and make some kind of decision, then, you know, we get all the reactions, and then we go from there, you know?
Yeah, it may not even make sense, because isn't the reason to have a multimodal station is if there's going to be a bunch of people getting on and off at that station? If there's no housing at that station, it may not make, a multimodal station makes sense, you know? It's got to service the population, right? So...
Well, you know, yeah, you're right. It doesn't need to service some population. What that population is, I'm not sure, but again, there's a lot of people that would go to work there.
But it has to, you have to make sure that there's enough population that it wouldn't be prohibitive, right? So, you have to have a threshold, a certain threshold where it makes sense to have a station.
You're right, like Lloyd was saying, there needs to be that balance. And we, whether we get there or not, I guess we'll see.
So, I want to just say right now, I think it's wise for us to make an effort to wrap up at 10:30. I feel like last meeting, we all went way too long, and we got cranky, and I know I didn't, I probably said things I shouldn't have said, or the way I shouldn't have, maybe I should have said them differently, and, you know, evaluated information not as clearly as I probably could have, because I was so tired, and I really want us to make an effort, if we're not done at 10:30, you know, maybe we can bring back questions next time. I just don't think that I'm, I don't think I'm receptive to the information to the degree I should be past that hour.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree. But I think we should try to get through as much of the material.
Oh, of course.
So, with that said...
Okay, I'll choose the ones...
Could we just follow up? I think John can amplify at least one part of your concern on the last question.
Okay.
Again, if you review the attachment, the draft study from the Bay Shore Station study, San Francisco's, for technical reasons only, they've abandoned the idea of moving the station northerly. Actually, the iteration they're showing will actually pull some of the platform southerly, again, for technical reasons, not for serving Brisbane per se, but that's sort of a byproduct of that study.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that, John. Okay, so on page 23, so number five, you know, how the multimodal station could potentially reduce traffic ingestion in the Baylands and also from the San Francisco development. So, in the last paragraph, you say increasing transit use will reduce the potential for traffic ingestion result from new development as compared to the congestion that would result from the same development with lesser use of transit. So, it's just in regards to new development, having the multimodal station with the different forms of transportation, I think it's pretty obvious that that would reduce traffic. Okay.
Okay. Anything else on 23? 25?
Yeah, you know, so, you know, so I had some questions in regards to, you know, You know, I visited Chicago recently, even though it was during the winter, I mean, people still walk, you know? I mean, it's just amazing. I mean, we're such, I don't know, kind of, anyways, I won't say it, but, you know, I just hope that whatever we decide to do, that we have a very walkable development. Okay, so, yeah, so the question number nine, so, and asked in regards to not only just having a multimodal station, but then also furthering that with retail, hotel, and also entertainment. So, if you're going to have a retail, like mall or whatever, perhaps incorporating that into the multimodal station itself, you're going to have hotels, you know, so you take, you know, a flight into SFO, take Bart to Millbrae, take Caltrain up to the Baylands, walk out of the station, or off your train, and just stay within the multimodal station to the hotel. This is down in Europe, Asia, quite extensively. So, you know, we don't have RDA anymore. To me, it makes sense that we should have some kind of public-private partnership going on with the station itself. So, and I know you had an example, can you, you know, talk about that transit-oriented development, TOD, and how you could incorporate something like that, Lloyd?
The other thing that isn't quite here in one of the, one of the givens, is so much of what we talk about comes down to land use. It's, what is the, you can set up all these pieces around a station, but unless you have the land use to support it, to make a lot of use of a station, the transit-oriented development doesn't work. The ones that are successful have a lot of development in places that people want to go or already have to go, and I think, you know, you look at some of the examples in the Bay Area that have, that have worked, and we've got a bunch down in Southern California where they had grandiose plans for transit-oriented development, and nothing ever got built, because those were not, I would call them major transit stations. They were designed to get people into downtown LA and to work in the morning, and to get them home in the afternoon, and along the MetroLink system in Southern California, the places that TOD worked is where transit stations were already in downtown areas that had a lot of development around it, but the station itself, without the development surrounding it, is just not generating the use. So, there's a lot of design things you can do, but it also comes down to having that development to support, as Councilmember Davis just said, what's there to support the transit use? And if you're banking on, and you want retail at the station, one of your major users are people going on and getting off the transit. So, you want that transit throughout the day, and you want a lot of people congregated in the area. That's, those are the two basic things before you get to the details.
Absolutely. Okay, that makes sense.
So, moving on to 26.
And, you know, in regards to having a free shuttle system in the Baylands, we could also, if it was the council's direction, to also include other parts of Brisbane with that shuttle system. It doesn't have to be just confined to the Baylands.
If it's negotiated as part of a development agreement, it's between you and the developer.
Okay, in regards to emissions, so, title 24, so by 2020, all residential supposed to, all new residential is supposed to be zero net emissions, by 2030, all commercial. So, we know that development out of the Baylands, even if we approve something tonight, it's going to be a long time before you start developing the site. Can we apply some of these standards that are designated by Title 24 into the future? Would that be, like, I guess you do that through a development agreement?
You had a separate question that we didn't respond to in this particular batch, and that relates to, it's more on point, but the short answer is that typically you have to do a study that's reviewed by the State Energy Commission, if you're going to impose a higher standard of energy conservation than the state code, and you'll see, we did that for some, the modifications we did to the Building Code last year to add the solar panel requirements, and that was based on, we had piggybacked on a study that San Mateo had done that we used for sort of the economic impact kind of study, so that's a requirement.
Okay, all right. So, you know, this was something that the developer was interested in pursuing, that's something that where the city and developer could work towards implementing, is ZNE development? All right.
Page 27.
Okay, and then, when, when we had the panel of, that was before the, that was up here on the dais, one of the questions that was raised, or maybe it was in the presentation about multi-story buildings being ZNE, so I just wanted to confirm with you that the technology is moving in such a way that currently there are... that currently there are, there are some buildings that are four to five stories. I don't want to put you on the spot, but, okay, so I won't put you on the spot. But I know multi-story buildings are being built that are ZNE. So, okay, thank you.
28.
Yeah, you know, so I didn't get a chance to take a look at that UC Davis West Village project. So maybe you might be able to help a little bit with that. So it's, so a student faculty apartment complex at the UC campus. There is 663 units of housing, 42,500 square feet of commercial space, and a community college. It was funded through public-private partnerships with federal and state energy research grants. It says it's the first time that a net zero energy, that zero, that net zero energy has been tried on apartment-scale housing and has served as a point of references, a reference for future development. So they didn't achieve 100%, but it looks like they, they're meeting 80% to 85% of their energy needs. They say that they're going to add additional solar panels and a biodigester, try and help them get to that 100%. And then they're saying, well, you know, because they're, you know, the tenants don't pay for electricity, that perhaps if they did pay for it, maybe they would get to the 100% or they're just using it because it's all bundled into the cost of living there. So can you just kind of explain a little bit about this project and, you know, kind of share that with us?
This is one I'm not really familiar with, so I can bring back more information. The, I'd have to bring that back.
Not a problem at all. Thank you.
Okay, page 29.
You know, we got 50 more pages just to, you know.
You said you wanted to go page by page.
Well, you know, I mean, here's the thing, right? I mean, I spent hours putting together these questions and I spent hours putting together my goals. And so, you know, I'm going to put them out there. I mean, I think they're important facts for the people to understand.
So who are you asking the question for, for you? I mean.
You know, people who are here in the audience, people who are watching on TV. You know, I don't want there to be the notion of alternative facts saying that we can't do something or that, you know, things are not feasible. I, you know, I want, you know.
Whether or not it doesn't matter, we set the land use, whether we like it or don't like it, it doesn't matter about what's feasible or not.
Clark, you need to know the facts and you need to have a good understanding of how all these different land uses connect with each other.
We have different ideas and different values when it comes to that.
Exactly, right? So I'm not, you know, telling you how to.
I'm just saying, it's almost 10 o'clock.
You got a lot, you know what?
Almost 10 o'clock and we've got 50 more pages to go through. If we're going at this pace, we're going to spend that meeting on August 7th going through this crap too.
You know, thank you for all the questions that I put out there as crap.
No, I'm saying, you know what?
You know, if we have to have another meeting, then, you know, let's have another meeting.
No, I want to go, I'll get to it on August 7th.
What I'm hearing is the question, what I'd like to hear, and I think what Clark is saying is that we should be asking questions and, you know, we can provide some comments, but this isn't the time to, you know, make our case based on the answers to the questions. So that's what, that's, you know, I could have said a lot, but I'm, you know, I understood the information. I digested it and it'll be part of, you know, my opinion at a future meeting, but I'm not going to. I understand making some points, but I do, I do feel like we could be going a little bit faster. We do appreciate all that, all that you put into it. There was a lot of questions, a lot of detail.
No, no, thank you for that. You know, we do have a very complex site and a very important site, you know. So if the council wants to, you know, get through these things in a fast, faster way, then sure, that's the pleasure of the council.
Or, you know, you may, if we don't get through them all, it may be worth it if you have additional questions to type them out and submit them.
I don't have additional questions. They're all right here.
No.
These are the questions I have.
Okay, are you asking, but you're asking for some clarification.
So.
Based on the answers you've gotten. So what I'm saying is that maybe what, if we don't get through them all, you can submit some of those clarifying questions. And I think that's, actually, it's more accessible to the public that way because they can just read it versus having to listen to the entire meeting. That's just my recommendation because really, you know, I asked maybe four or five. Terry's asked a few, Clark hasn't really asked any, haven't heard any from Lori. So I just feel like it's mostly just a conversation between you and staff.
Okay, you know, again, you know, we can look at this and really try and understand how this project is going to impact us, you know, and also understand about the ramifications of our actions.
But I think we feel we've done that.
I don't think that we are. And so, you know, again, I mean, you know, our planet is going to pot. And, you know, unless we turn things around, you know, we're going to have major catastrophes with climate change. So every community has to take a responsibility. And so how we do that is, you know, by understanding, you know, our connection with the things that are going on with the planet. So I tell you what, you know, I'll make them brief here and I'll just, I'll cherry pick the ones that I think are the most important.
Sure.
And we'll get through it and, okay.
Page 29.
Okay. Yeah, let's just keep going.
Page 30.
You know what? I'm done.
Okay, 31.
I'm fine.
Okay, well, this is for everybody.
You know what, because, you know, it's good.
Are you sure?
No, you know what, I'm fine.
Because I don't want you to feel attacked. I really don't. I want to work together.
You know what, I kind of feel like I'm just wasting my time and that's sad. You know, I know, I'm serious. I mean, I think, you know, we move forward with creating a sustainability framework, right? To address the important issues that make a difference in making the world a better place. And we, you have like disted, we're not using it, you know, we're not asking the questions. And I'm trying not to be frustrated. I mean, I was hoping that we would all be like really engaged in trying to make the Baylands an amazing part of our city. But we, but instead, you know, we, we don't, I don't know, it's like we're not talking with each other. And there's that, there, I don't know.
We can't.
I think we're going to get to that. We're just asking clarifying questions at this point.
You know, I think we're even talking about cutting to the chase and.
That's what we want to get to. So let's.
Again, I don't, you know, I, my questions are in writing and I think the responses that I got back were satisfactory to me. You know, so again, I was having this exchange with staff so that folks in the audience could understand. So people who are watching at home can understand, so they know where I come from. And then, you know, I, you know, I mean, I want our city to do the right thing. So, and the only way that I can help my city is to provide the information. And so if, if, you know, if this isn't the right forum that the council feels comfortable with, being on the dais, asking the questions and hitting the answers, if we feel like, hey, you know what? That isn't really appropriate, you know, at this time, that eventually, well, I guess we'll get to it. Then, okay, then I guess we'll get to it. But right now, it doesn't seem appropriate, so I'm good.
I think it's less about the questions for you right now and more just like, kind of making sure people understand things that are important to you. And I feel that, and wanting us to understand certain aspects that you find are really important. And I absolutely agree with why you're doing that. I just think this is a little premature because I think we're going to be able to get more into that on August 7th. And really, you're going to, right now, we're having to censor ourselves. And I think it's making it more difficult because we really can't communicate in this moment. But I think.
I don't, I don't understand why we can't. Is the deliberation?
Because we've just determined earlier in the meeting that we really cannot discuss land use.
But that doesn't mean we can't talk about certain things in these questions.
But I didn't, I thought that we were just going to go through and ask clarifying questions, not really discuss.
Yeah, well, I guess that's where we are. I guess if we just want to clarify the answers that we got, then we'll ask those questions. I'm satisfied with the responses I received.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to keep going page by page because other people may have questions and hopefully we'll go a little bit faster.
I don't have any more questions.
You don't have any more questions. Okay. Clark, do you have any more questions?
No, I have none. I read through the, I read through everything and.
All right.
It said I, clarification I did as I asked for staff today and that was it.
Okay, great. Terry.
So on page 32, question 24, question about the natural shoreline on the lagoon. Does the landfill go right up to the current lagoon shoreline?
Do you, you mean, does it go up to the riprap, Pam?
Yes.
It's short of the riprap, but it's a very irregular pattern. We could produce a map of that for you.
Okay, thank you. And then on page 34, on question 34, it's a question about when the dirt is moved from the landfill side to the rail yard side, will the soil be tested? And I know that any import or export would be tested, but I know that UPC has expressed in a subcommittee that they may be looking at importing to the rail yard side rather than transferring from side to side. And do you have any additional information to give on that?
This was a discussion that the Planning Commission went through. One option would be for traditional, what do you call it, traditional grading operation, that soil would be moved from east to west. The other concept would be to sell the soils on the east side. It would be shipped off-site and then purchase soils to be imported onto the west side. And at this point, the environmental impact report is based on the more traditional grading operation. And I think anything beyond that really is, you know, the developer's commitment as to what he would do. But the assumption, underlying assumption in the EIR is the traditional grading operation of moving within the site.
Okay, thank you.
And before we go on, there's one thing I would like to correct, going back to question number. I think we're getting, no, we're not up to it yet. I'll wait. Question, when you get up to number 54, I've got a correction to make.
I wish we were. Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
You wanted me to go through all mine now.
Yeah, because they don't, no one else except for me, and I haven't gone yet, but I'll, as chair, I'll allow you to go first.
Okay.
And then it'll be my turn. You can go through the entire document.
Okay, I'll try to go very quickly. On question 44 that was asked about vacuum tube technology, and it says recology doesn't have the capability yet. It says that we would take this into consideration when a remedial action landfill closure plans for the site. Why would that be looked at at that point rather than earlier in the development process?
I think you need, even if it's, I'm sorry, even if it's done earlier in the process, remedial action plans, landfill closure, if you want to create these vacuum tubes under the ground would have to be looked at in terms of where are those tubes going? So there's a number of different considerations. You could look at it earlier, but obviously in the end, you can create vacuum tubes on this side, but there's got to be something, recology has to be able to accept the waste via that tube.
Okay. And then you said you had a correction on 55?
54.
Number 54, we reversed the, or the information on the Brisbane and Bay Shore School Districts and how they're getting funding. The Brisbane School District is a basic aid, traditionally been basic aid.
What paragraph are you in?
First paragraph from page 39.
Okay.
The Brisbane School District is a basic aid, which means that they keep, have traditionally kept the property taxes. The Bay Shore School District, as well as Jefferson, are revenue limited in that they're getting paid per average daily attendance.
Thank you. And I just had one question. Is that in that, on page 39, are charter schools considered private schools or public schools under this formula?
That's a good question.
That I do not know.
I think they could be either because Summit and Shasta are, well, Shasta's part of Summit, but it's a, it's a public school.
Terry, anything else?
I'm going through my highlighted notes to see if there's anything that is pertinent or just for my perusal. I have a correction on page 48, on the second paragraph, the last line. To approval of a specific for the Baylands, do we mean a specific plan?
Yes.
Okay. So on phasing, on page 55, question six, and it asks, and boy, I think this might have been my question. What guarantees do we have if the developer builds the residential component and then runs out of money? That they won't move forward with building the commercial? And I think it's that not necessarily if they run out of money, but, or the desire to build the other phasing. And I just had a question. I think it was answered somewhat, but it should have been whether they want to or they, it's not just necessarily if they ran out of money.
Correct. And also, is there interest in building whatever uses are left to be?
So I just wanted to make that clear that it wasn't just, you know, due to financial inability, but more of a, if they wanted to. And I really want to, I appreciate the city on page 57, giving some of the funding costs, what square footage would cost in development fees or special assessment districts. I think it's really important to know that an average-sized unit would have additional fees of approximately $7,500 a year in additional fees for maintenance fees. And that's, does not sound like it's the cost of any O and M that would be required for remedial action. And I want to, I appreciate the city putting that information and I think it's really important. And then, uh, on page sixty-one, question twenty-two, I was actually looking for information on both seawater and chemicals in the fill, and how they would combine to increase the corrosive properties on the, uh, infrastructure that's below ground. So if we could get a little more information on that later, that'd be great. And then, on page sixty-three, question twenty-six, about Golden State lumber, um, has Golden State lumber been in agreement to sell and move, or do we not know that?
There have been ongoing conversations, um, I haven't had a conversation with them in the last year or so, but, you know, they still indicated their understanding of what the process was, the city's process, and that they were interested in relocating within the confines of the plan area. That's the last conversation I had.
That's good to know. Thank you. And then, on page sixty-four, question thirty-one, about BCDC, the Bay Conservation District, um, they, it, it, they have not been contacted about the, the shoreline change from the riprap to the, the gradient, um, softening of the lagoon front, but it has been shown in some of the developers' images and reports. So I just wanna make that clear, that they haven't been approached on that yet.
Not by the- Not by the city, so it may have been applicant discussion with BCDC, and we can't speak to that.
Okay. Great. And I think that's the end of my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Okay. So, I made it easy. I typed up all my questions, and I put them on one page.
Oh, great.
Should go pretty quickly. Okay. So, on page forty-eight, water supply. I appreciate the thorough analysis here, um, but the one question that wasn't answered was about what would happen if there's a drought. So, and when I meant drought, I meant in, in the Oakdale Irrigation District. Um, if they experienced a drought and were relying on water, that is, through an agreement with them, what, um, impact would that have on our ability to get water for the baylands?
The, couple of things. One, Oak, and, and I'll let, um, Public Works Director also answer. Oakdale has indicated that there is adequate supply, uh, for wet year, dry year, multiple dry years, based on what they have in the past diverted from the river. Um, beyond that, if there were somehow a total reduction in water supply, it would be just like what we went through in, in the drought, that that, uh, reduction would presumably be shared among various users of the water supply.
Okay. Thank you. And, on page fifty-three, number seven, um, this was my question about, um, the threat of, you know, by San Francisco of, um, seeding, you know, annexing the city of Brisbane or the baylands, um, um, that's been, you know, a, a threat, yet what is the legal ability of that to happen? You know, from the text, it says that it would have to be agreed to by our city and go through LAFCO. So, is that correct?
I think, you know, I'll defer to city attorney.
Under current state statute, the answer's yes, that, uh, the property owner would have to seek detachment, uh, through the San Mateo LAFCO, and the city would need to agree to that. That doesn't mean that the law couldn't change in the future, but under current state law, that's the process.
Okay. So if the law were changed, that would have to happen at the state level?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. On page sixty-one, I had a question about the sea level rise vulnerability assessment report that was released in April. Wanted to ask if we can get a copy of that, and also, um, it states that, you know, it identified Highway 101 as a vulnerable asset, and I, I served on the committee several years ago when that was first starting to be done, that vulnerability assessment, and my recollection was, when I looked at the map, most of their, you know, red areas of, you know, endangered, um, community space, you know, endangered sites that were, were much closer, were, were further south and closer to the bay, like, like Facebook's campus, for example. And so, can we have some information from that, um, the report that shows what their assessment was of the bayland site? Not just Highway 101?
Sure.
Thank you. Um, page sixty-four to sixty-five, okay. So, my question here, oh, actually, yeah, it was sixty-three to sixty-four. So, um, this was a question about the MTC, um, and the relationship between what they're doing with, um, Plan Bay Area 2040 right now. Um, and as we know, that their proposed draft plan includes the forty-four hundred units of housing. Um, and so, can you just clarify what the impact of MTC's actions would be, if any, on the baylands planning? And, you know, my understanding is, you know, we have local land use control, but are there any other potential impacts with respect to transportation funding for whatever does get approved at the baylands, as well as other projects, um, that they may have purview of, such as Crocker Park Trail, or any others? In, within Brisbane? What, what are the, the ramifications of their decision, um, and our decision with respect to their power over transportation funding?
What I'll say is, is the basic rule and the way that the system is supposed to work is that the transportation improvements and funding of transportation improvements is to be consistent with the improvements laid out in the regional sustainable community strategy, as well as the regional transportation plan. So, while it may be clear that the transportation improvements need to be consistent with the plan, how the land use carries over the transportation improvements, I think, has really not been tested yet.
Okay. And do they, does that organization have any purview over funding of things like our trail improvements? Or is that through CCAG? What's the relationship there?
So, MTC serves as the main conduit through which federal and state transportation dollars are routed down through the different associations, through the different congestion management agencies. And if you're talking about the Crocker Park Trail, for instance-
Yes.
-that one was completely funded through dollars that MTC controls.
And is there any risk of losing that?
Not at this point in time, that I'm aware of. Uh, but, but the challenge we face with an organization like MTC, that's a metropolitan planning organization, and a regional planning transportation authority, is that a significant amount of the dollars that come through that organization are discretionary. So their board gets to set what the requirements are for. Now, that's distinct from the typical dollar, take for instance Senate Bill One, that Mr. Bell just recently passed through. That has proposed new excise tax on gasoline and on diesel gas, and that is calculated the same way the highway user's tax account has been calculated for decades. In other words, it's based on a population, and it is also a direct subvention. So in other words, that money is taken off of a gasoline sales, it comes in, the Board of Equalization, the State Controller's Office calculates the dollar amount, that goes right to the city. That is not what the majority of the money that comes from MTC is. They, they're gonna impose requirements on it. In the past couple of years, one of the things that they've done is they've tried to encourage development in PDAs. Uh, oftentimes, as a Public Works Director, all of us, I think, within San Mateo County, find that a little frustrating, because if we, if you have a brand-new PDA that's got something built, its roads are in pretty good shape, it's the roadways surrounding that, they're outside of the PDA, so it's, it's sort of counterintuitive. But that's, that's what we're dealing with here in the Bay Area, that is who takes care of distributing, again, these discretionary federal and state dollars through this, the nine-county Bay Area, and they are gonna shape things. They, they are gonna make things happen the way that, that their vision is. And if, for those organizations that choose to not follow that vision, they're going to see less and less discretionary dollars coming their way.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Page sixty-seven, a question about the regional welfare doctrine, as it pertains to approving housing. So, I think I may have asked this a couple of meetings ago, but to reiterate, um, if the city approves of a project that does not include housing, is there any legal risk that this doctrine may apply? Um, as we've heard it used by some housing proponents, to suggest that allowing for commercial without the residential has adverse impacts on the adjacent communities regarding traffic and carbon emissions. So, does that argument hold any legal weight?
Well, I don't know if it holds legal weight, but I would certainly be surprised if there were a legal challenge, that it didn't include that concept. Uh, certainly, the, the door is open with respect to that, and the, uh, if the council approves a project, uh, that does not include housing, it would need to include adequate findings in there that indicated that the council had considered the, um, the regional impacts, and found that those impacts were mitigated by other, uh, other projects, so that it was not necessary for the city to approve housing on this particular site. And, and we would, you know, have to make sure that those findings were supported by the evidence in the record, and, uh, that would be the defense if there was a challenge based on that, uh, legal concept.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. My next question is, um, page seventy-one to seventy-two, regarding the water rights, the pre-1914 water rights. So, there's a couple of lawsuits discussed here. Um, some of the ones filed in Stanioslos County in 2015 by Oakdale Irrigation District, and some others against the State Water Resources Control Board. Can you briefly describe those lawsuits, their current status, and any legal bearing they may have on our proposed project?
I don't know the, the current status of those, uh, of that litigation, whether it's been dismissed or not, in light of the, uh, the end of the situation, but basically, uh, my understanding is that these, these various, uh, holders of the, the water rights that predate to, at 1914, um, when the state basically said that they were, uh, that those rights could not be exercised over the, the drought that was, uh, affecting the whole state, and therefore, that those rights would be, could be impacted. That's when those law, those lawsuits were brought in order to invalidate the, I don't remember if it was, uh, the, the region, or the, uh, the state agency's order, or whatever it was, but there was a challenge to that, to that order. And, um, I don't believe that the case went far enough to have a definitive answer, either out of the trial court or in the appellate court, but that was the, the gist of it, was that they felt that, that their pre-1914 rights were being infringed on by the state order.
Okay. And then, the other cases, or case discussed there is, um, it's actually on page forty-eight, so backing up a little bit, um, that there's, um, litigation that was filed by the Oakdale Groundwater Alliance against the Oakdale Irrigation District, and there was a recent trial court decision there, um, that was, um, the, the staff report says it was unrelated, it was a project that, it, it doesn't have any legal bearings on our council's deliberations. So can you touch upon that?
Yes, the, the, the issue, there may have been a number of different issues in the case, but the, the trial court's decision had to do with whether or not a, an environmental impact report should have been prepared in lieu of a mitigated negative declaration. And the standard for that is a fairly low, uh, fairly low standard, and the trial court determined that the, an environmental impact report should have been prepared, rather than the negative declaration. Uh, it doesn't seem to have any particular bearing with respect to any decision, uh, that is currently going on, uh, for water from OID, and any, I mean, water agreement between the city and OID. Whether or not, if that agreement moves down the line, whether OID might have to do some environmental analysis is likely, and what that might take, uh, what, whether that would be a negative declaration or an EIR, will just depend on, on the nature of what, of what has to be gotten from OID.
Okay. Thank you. And my last, uh, question about water supply, um, so, on page fifty-one, um, the staff report talks about the Vineyard Area Citizens case, which was raised by, um, one of our residents here, Deb Horn, mentioned that one, I believe. Um, and can you talk about what that case says, and why, um, the staff report believes, you know, the city takes a position that the, you know, what the difference is between the planning level decision that is required here, versus what would need to be required? What kind of analysis would have to happen later, with respect to water supply?
I think it has to do with, you know, where in the, where in the process that you are looking at whether or not there is an adequate water supply to serve the development in question. Uh, in, in the Vineyard case, the development was far enough down along the line where there had to be a more definitive, uh, a more definitive of availability of the water. In our particular case, at this point, we feel that the EIR identifies a, a place where water could come from, and we've identified the, the matters that have to be negotiated in order for that to occur, and we feel, under the Vineyard standard, this particular project is not so far along, where the fact that these agreements are not in place does not, uh, render the EIR inadequate.
Okay. And it also says that the, it said the, um, the details are entirely dependent on the amount of water which would be needed, which in turn is dependent on the land use that is ultimately approved. So, it can't, that kind of analysis can't be done at this point? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Um, so, those are all my questions. Is there anything further from the council?
Yeah, I, I wanna know, um, what would be the timeline that we could expect the rest of the questions that weren't able to be answered by this meeting, when we can expect those answers?
Yes. I was gonna ask that.
It's not really, um, some of the questions, the next batch, or we'll be able to prepare in advance of your, and probably along with your August seventh mailout. Some of them, I think, as we talked about, for example, the issue about the traffic and the delay, you know, some of those are a lot more complicated. So, um, you know, I'm hesitant to say when we're gonna get around to answering all the remaining questions, um, but I guess with the next submittal, we can try to give, uh, the council a better idea of what the, if we aren't able to deliver the rest at the next mailout, we'll try to give a better window of time as to what it would take and how long it might take to deliver the final missing responses.
Okay.
And I, I have one question for staff. During this process- During this process that we've been going through, the community's been asking questions. Have we been keeping tally of those and are we intending to answer them? Or was the list that we were given of questions that we indicated were important to us, the definitive list that we've been keeping track of?
We've been keeping track of, it was back in the June, I believe it was June 17 meeting. There's an attachment that was a list of both council and community-based questions we identified. Our thought process was that the council would use that list to sort of triage, and those we would focus on and prioritize our answers. That's what we've been doing to date. The other ones are in process, and again, they're going to be in the same situation. Some are, a lot of the ones that we've covered in here are actually part of that master list. And again, we can provide that documentation. And again, some of those will be relatively easy to answer, and others will be very complicated. We are trying to triage or prioritize the council-identified questions.
If we can get a copy of the, that un-trialed list, just so the public knows what questions have been asked, that would be appreciative to me.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Last thing. When were we going to discuss? Because we were supposed to have read the One Planet evaluation, and we were going to discuss at this meeting whether we wanted to move forward with the presentation. So are we still planning to have that discussion, or are we going to do that next meeting?
Thank you for reminding us about that.
It's not on the agenda, right?
Yeah, it's not on the agenda. I mean, we could talk about that probably in item A, but before we do that, I want to get to public comment.
Yes.
So unless there's anything else from the council, I'd like to get to-
Motion to extend meeting five minutes.
Second. Is there a, all right, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So let's get to the public comment. I have a few slips. Anya Miller?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Council. If we have five people commenting, do I then have one minute?
No.
I think it was a joke, but it should have been at least 11 o'clock.
Well, you know, just to funny, before I get to my prepared remarks, I've heard tonight again, a feeling that expressed that somehow the developer must agree with your plan. And that's not true at all. The Planning Commission Plan, for instance, does not have to have a developer approval. You do not have to have that approval. They speculated, they bought the land, agreed to the cleanup at that time, said in 1988, said they had the funds to clean up as the regulators were requiring. They made a speculation, whatever they paid for that land, there is no responsibility for you to make sure that they make their speculative profits. And the plan you make is for us, our city, and has nothing to do, very little to do with the region either. You represent us people. Second thing is that any vote that you're going to have has to do with the general plan. That is the question. Should the general plan be changed? And as long as you are now working under the existing general plan, you are perfectly legal, as far as I understand. The general plan is your constitution, and whatever you do, it is consistent, and that's what the Planning Commission Plan is. It's consistent with the general plan, with some minor changes maybe should be called for, like the sustainability, including all that. And then the sea level report that was referred to here, I've looked at it, and it's amazing, they did not include any of the flood zone areas in Brisbane. It's all just the Caltrain and Highway 101 that's listed as an asset suspect to sea level. The plan is only a draft, and they did not do a specific study for Brisbane at all. We were excluded from all the studies they did, individual studies of Half Moon Bay and the Facebook area. All sorts of plans were studied in detail, but not Brisbane. There's no mention of Brisbane in any of the studies. So that plan is still a draft, and you should comment on it and make sure that the final plan includes more information on Brisbane vulnerabilities. Okay. I need to go back to, your last meeting was on Thursday, and all this material was provided, I understand, on Thursday. And here you have another meeting in half a day after, after visiting day after that meeting. And the public was not, the information for this meeting was not accessible to the public because the website, your city website was down Saturday and Sunday. So people could not access the information you have in front of you all weekend. And so it's really unreasonable to assume that people would have had any kind of chance to, I, you know, had access before. So I spent Friday looking at it and some of today. But most people are not aware of what you're dealing with right now. Then my understanding that you were asked to make your list of personal questions and some sort of triage of public questions. But we were understanding all through these hearings, through the Planning Commission, through the EIR, both the draft and final, that the questions remaining were being noted down and that we would have answers, not just you. And I'm glad you referred to some of the citizens presented. Some residents have asserted, and then you had an answer. But we really need to know the full list of questions remaining from the people and when those answers will be coming. And also, because I heard interns presenting to your subcommittee, it really raised the question of who's doing the answers that you're here accepting. Who are the interns? Who are the authors of those replies? I think each and every person who answered a question should be identified. Who is the author of each answer? And there's some question about just who provided the answer, to my mind. The bottom line again here, the perception is among the people that you're not listening. You're not listening to us, you have other ideas, you have your personal opinions, and you're going to stick to your personal opinions, and you're not referring to what, well, sometimes you say you've heard people say. But are you really taking that as part of your consideration, or is it still just your personal opinion? You have a daunting task here, everybody understands that. This is really, really difficult. But your task is to put aside your personal preferences and help us all retain some sort of viability of life here in current Brisbane. And Slade Lock is the big development. That's going to be the transit use right there. And their traffic, 80% of those people will be coming through. Their own EIR says Slade Lock will result in gridlock at all Bay Shore intersections up to the freeway. So that's the traffic, and I'm glad you approached that. But that is what you have to face. San Francisco owes you their regional responsibility of concern, and that's what you should be addressing right away. Thank you.
Thank you, Anya. Ray Miller?
It's just an accident that we share the same last name. So, Mayor, council members, I'd like to express some concerns about what you just mentioned, the One Planet Living report. I have six concerns, and I think I can go through them fairly rapidly. First, for the One Planet Living team to accept a paid consultant role at this early stage of the decision-making process undermines their role as an objective third-party evaluator. The city's sustainability framework presumed that One Planet Living would make a judgment on the ultimately-approved plan and then provide continuous monitoring to ensure that the target indicators were being met. By taking a position at this early stage, One Planet Living has become an advocate rather than a reviewer. In my view, both One Planet Living and UPC have made a serious mistake. Two, in his forward, the director of One Planet Living makes clear that the major objective they have for the Baylands is, quote, "maximizing the number of homes," end of quote. In fact, their baseline for housing units is the developer's proposal of 4,500 units. They then look at options with 6,800 units and 9,150 units and settling on their optimum of 7,500 units. Three, clearly, One Planet Living has absolutely no concern for Brisbane retaining its small-town character. Since Brisbane has about 2,000 housing units now, their considered housing options would increase our housing stock about 340%, 375%, or 460%. So what reasons, number four, do they give for their focus on housing? One, there is a regional housing shortage. Two, Brisbane has no independent reason for existing. It really should be, quote, "treated as a part of San Francisco," end of quote. Three, the more housing, the less traffic congestion and greenhouse gas emissions. Five, the third reason did not seem plausible to me, so I look for some support for this conclusion. I can only find two. One, their approach to development involves much fewer parking spaces, 50%, so that there would be fewer cars. Their optimum option, that includes 7,500 units of housing, presumes a 50% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions and a 70% reduction in household transportation cost. So how is that accomplished? The only explanation that I could find was on page 43. Quote, "In the case of a One Planet community where a resident can walk and cycle to fulfill all their daily needs, their expenditure on transport can fall by close to 70%, saving over $250 per week." Six, finally, the report barely mentions the toxic remediation needs of the site. It's included in their land and nature principle, not human health. They mention long-term monitoring of open space, but not of the remediation program. They also accept the landowner's dubious argument that the city is responsible for allowing as much developer as the developer claims will be necessary to pay for the remediation of the toxic contamination. In fact, that is one of the reasons that the One Planet Living downgrades the renewable energy alternative and by implication, the recommendation of the Planning Commission, because they say it doesn't provide enough funds for the toxic remediation. However, it was my understanding that the landowner is legally responsible for financing the remediation plan, whether or not there is any development. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. And if you have any written remarks that you can submit to our deputy city clerk for the minutes, that would, for the record, that would be very helpful.
I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And before I move on to the next speaker, I just wanted to respond to something that Anya Miller brought up about the website being down. So we learned about that today through the city council, and our city attorney did look at it and determined that there was still adequate notice because the agenda and staff report were still available at the library and in other locations. And if there's any further comment on that, it was adequate notice, but we do apologize for that. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. First off, I agree with Anya Miller and Ray Miller. I'm glad they put that on the record. And as far as the legal notice you're talking about, legal notice is one thing, and what Anya was mentioning about people actually being able to review the materials is quite another thing. So we're not questioning, at least I'm not questioning the legality of tonight's meeting in which you're discussing, but I support Anya's feeling 100% that people wouldn't have much time to look at the data that's currently available on the site when it's up. Now, I want to thank Madison and Clark for saying, hey, I know what I want, and I'm ready to do it. And when it comes to this issue of voting and supporting a vote for the residents, it seems to me that there's a possibility that this city council could come to an agreement or a decision before November 7. And if they do that, and depending on how that goes, it could have an impact on that election. It would seem like doing what Madison suggested, putting a ballot measure together in time for November, whether it's advisory or whether it's non-binding or binding, either way, would give the citizens an opportunity to say housing, yes or no, developer plan, yes or no, community plan, yes or no. And I think after almost two years, the majority of people who intend to vote are probably pretty clear on those three issues. So I'd like to see you support that concept, or at least give it some more serious thought. Now, I'll be very brief. I reviewed the city's website today and saw roughly 35 or more letters that went into, that were posted. And the majority of those letters were of a form letter nature, which indicated a concerted effort to influence this city council's opinion by people all apparently from outside of town. And they're all in favor of housing. But there were a couple that really stood out that I thought, just in case any of you or the people viewing, if anybody's still home or they're going to review this tomorrow, hadn't had a chance to go there and see or didn't think to do it. Well, there was one from somebody named Aaron Van de Ver, Van de Vender, excuse me. And he said, "Hello, wonderful people of Brisbane. I'd like to talk about the Baylands. It would be such a wonderful place for some new neighbors, right on the Caltrain and next to many great jobs like Genentech and all of the biotech companies that are trying to cure diseases and help humanity in our community. Would be a great place for 10,000 new houses since housing is so scarce in the moment. We could really use a lot more." Thank you, Aaron. And the last one is from a person named Ira Kaplan, who says, "To Baylands, subject Baylands Housing. Hi, build 50,000 units of housing in the Baylands, please. There's enough room for it. Best, Ira." The Bay Shore Sanitary District Director, May Swanbeck, was suggesting that Senator Feinstein has proposed a bill to help cities with loans to develop stormwater runoff, recapturing, reuse, and runoff. And that's something that I think you're all considering and aware of in this project. It hasn't been, to my knowledge and my opinion is, those issues should have been dealt with decades ago and have been essentially ignored. But May is saying that Governor Brown's executive- But May is saying that Governor Brown's executive order B 3716 has proposed to make water conservation a way of life in California. And I think we're pretty much understanding that's a reality, because the drought that lasted almost 10 years is not an if. I think somebody said, it may have been Lori mentioned something about the Oakdale Water Irrigation District saying, if there's another drought, and it's not a matter of if, that's the history, the long-term history of California is droughts, before even people lived here. There's one other thing that I'd like to bring to your attention, and that's an article that appeared today in the San Jose Mercury News. It says, "These Bay Area homes were built by Joseph Eichler to be affordable and now cost millions." I don't know if any of you happen to see this, but I would suggest you search it out.
I did.
Oh, you did? Great. For those of you who didn't, I think you should check it out. This article mentions part of the history of Eichler and his development. They omitted that Eichler, from all the developments that they mentioned that Eichler did, they omitted one that's right over the hill, about a mile and a half from where we're sitting right now, in Visitation Valley. And I grew up in that development, and it was really beautiful when he first built it. It was one of the first condo townhome developments in California, I think, or in San Francisco. Now they're common, then they weren't. And they made some mistakes when they built that. And they were serious mistakes. And now you could buy a house over there right now. I didn't check today's prices, but they're nothing like Brisbane. They're probably 50% or less of what you could pay in Brisbane. Four bedrooms, two and a half baths, really nice little layout, pretty brick facades, except it looks like San Quentin now over there because of the crime. And that's what we want to avoid happening in Brisbane. We don't want to be an extension of Visitation Valley in San Francisco because we don't want all of that crime. That's a big deal. Thank you very much for your indulgence.
Thank you. Jonathan Scharfman.
Madam Mayor, Council, my concerns were addressed with earlier comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my friends. Back again. I want to speak very strongly in support of both Anya and Ray Miller's comments. I had a couple things I want to throw out. After that panel, I asked the presenter to actually provide me with the data on the higher-rise buildings being able to be zero net energy, and I have not heard anything back with respect to the chair, if staff could maybe follow up and get a response on my behalf. I very much appreciate that, if you guys are willing, because I really would like that information. I like, I pride myself on being up to date on these issues. And so if there's something out there I don't know about, I want to be informed, just like you do. So I kept hearing that the Baylands project is going to reduce traffic impacts with the housing. It's not. It's not. It's not. It's not. And I'm hoping that was just a poor choice of words, because it's going to reduce the impacts regionally, but it's going to suck for us locally. We're going to get pounded locally. And I just think that you need to keep, make sure what words you're using, because I think the public listening to this are going to get the impression that, like, it's going, we're going to build this transit, and it's just going to be fixed things, and it's not. It's going to get so much worse for us locally. So housing is a central issue, but I don't think it can necessarily be the linchpin of your decision. We know UPC has advocates going door-to-door throughout the city of Brisbane. And, you know, nothing personal here, but I can't see them giving both sides of the story. That's not what they're paid to do. And even the survey had some support for housing, and I think the reason it did is because the population doesn't have a full story, doesn't know that housing isn't even permitted out there, and hasn't been. So it's, for me, the main central issue of the Baylands is safety and carbon. You know, I personally have real reservations about whether or not we can mitigate those toxins long-term, that, you know, a 1%, I mean, where do you say a 1% rise in cancer rates, a 2% rise in cancer rates, 3% rise in cancer rates? What's acceptable when you're making that decision for somebody else? And that really, I think it should give everybody a serious pause here. And maybe you have to go to bed and say, okay, a 3% cancer rate increase in cancer rates is okay. I couldn't do it. So and the other main thing, so safety and environment, and the other environment, the DEIR identified as the energy generation plan, the alternative energy plan, is having the lowest impact carbon-wise, both total and per capita. So if you really say that you're looking for sustainability, that that's important to you, I would hope that you would support the Planning Commission's recommendation, which is what, where that came out of. You know, it came out of the alternative energy plan. And then just, I had some few words to say on the zero parking thing. Well, it's great on paper. We still have people living very divergent lives in the Bay Area, you know, spouses over here, childcare over there. I mean, what are you going to do if you have a job on the Baylands, even if you live on the Baylands, you can't have childcare on the Baylands. How are you going to get to your childcare facility to pick up your child at a reasonable hour? What is the business, I just can't see the business community on the Baylands, the retail being happy with zero car situation, because they're going to be like, well, people off the Baylands can't come here, you know, and they're going to want things, and people with physical limitations, you know, who maybe can't walk very far. And also, just to Anya's point, the developer, you know, so back up, I'm flipping out here. Back in the 1950s, 70s, I think it was, when they started putting seat belts in car, the car manufacturers all cried, oh my God, we can't do that, it'll be too expensive, nobody will buy our cars, you just can't do this, this is government interference, oh my God, oh my God, oh my God. And they did it, and it worked, and it wasn't so bad. But if you say the developer, find out what the developer wants, they're going to say, we want everything. We are going to walk into our Scion dealership, and we want a Porsche, and you should give it to us. So I really don't think that you have to have too much personal concern, and that's what their job is, is to be hard negotiators. So don't worry about it. Thanks.
Thank you. I have no more slips. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this topic? Seeing no hands.
Madam Mayor, can we skip the Christmas list tonight? And just...
Yeah, I think the, you mean the list of written correspondence?
Yeah.
I'll omit the dates, but before we get to that, move on to Mayor and Council matters. So city council schedule concerning Baylands deliberations. Our next meeting is on August 7th. We have two other meetings in August. We had a question by Madison about the One Planet Living. I guess the question I'm wondering is, what do we want to put on the agenda to make sure that the agenda reflects what we're going to be able to discuss at the next meeting? So...
Well, I don't want to discuss it. I reviewed it, and I don't feel like I need a presentation. I actually felt like it was written really well, and I thoroughly understand what was being communicated. So for me, I personally don't need a presentation.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I agree as well.
I read it.
You know, I just want to make a comment about what Ray had said. I'm also disappointed that One Planet Living did this report. When I found out that they were going to do it, I actually reached out to Peron, One Planet Living.
I didn't know that.
And said, hey, don't do this, because you've created this document. This document was written by us, by the people. Ray Miller contributed greatly to it. You run the risk of having that collusion, you know, that, you know, I mean, whether it's real or not, you know, people might think that way. I think the document that we've created is by the people, and that we should never think that that didn't come from us. And so everything that's in that document is, I think, our goals, at least how we put that together in regard to sustainability. But I did think that one of the 10 principles that Peron forgot when he put together that document was the culture and community. And in Peron's response to me, he looks at this as, he does look at it as a planetary type of perspective, and I think he forgot to think about us. And to me, it's putting out those numbers, it's like MTC, a bag, putting out the 4,400 units. It's like, you just don't do that. You know, let us, let us get through what we need to get through, and if, you know, we'll make that decision on what's appropriate. But I hope we just don't throw out the sustainability framework because of this document that was presented.
So it sounds like the consensus is we don't need a presentation, and I kind of agree. At this point, I think we're all ready to move on and talk about land use, so we'll make sure that's on the agenda, land use deliberations on August 7th, so the public's aware of that's where we're going. And I'll move on to written communications, acknowledged receipt of written communications regarding the Brisbane Baylands. So between the 14th and 24th of July, we received the following correspondence...
Can we not read that and just adjourn? No, really, we don't need to hear it. I mean, we get all that stuff, and it's like, let's just get out of here tonight.
Okay, is that okay? The staff, it's on the agenda? Okay, so it's in the public record if anyone wants to see it. There's, I guess, maybe 35 or so public comments.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.